Include her at that point.
Okay.
All the order, the January 14th meeting of the Village of Cold Spring Planning Board. We have member Hawkins and member Myers. We expect member Eldon shortly, but we have a quorum so we can get started. Chair's remarks. Nothing really new, obviously, you know, as we go through the minutes. We, you know, we'll go through that, the last application that we had, which I believe you were all included on the email. Forty-nine Main Street, which was the old Apothecary and then the weather shop.
I think he decided to quit, right?
Yeah, just withdrew, yeah, withdrew the application.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Oh, and we have, we have Lara now joining. So member Eldon is joining.
Sorry, I was late.
No, no problem. So we're just getting started. So I was just saying that I'm forty-nine Main Street with through the application. We were scheduled, but last time we had scheduled them for public hearing. So they have withdrawn their application. Presumably it kind of sounded like just, just for the for the effort of changing the use. But it wasn't very clear. Alright, so do we have any, we'll move on to the meeting minutes. Let me just, I'll share these out and we'll. So this was the forty-nine Main Street as well as the, we had added to the agenda eight Depot Square.
Yep.
So these are the minutes, let me just.
Those are very beautiful minutes. Look at those.
Thanks to Michael Mel.
Those icons.
One page. Okay, so online public hearing.
Hello, Lara.
Do we, it's not a public hearing, alright?
I'm sorry, the, our last.
Online public hearing.
That was the last time we said, but if you cancel, there will be no public hearing.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We said, we said a workshop, right?
Right. Yeah, yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't a public hearing. I'm sorry, I thought for a moment you were asking about this meeting.
Okay, we had myself, members, Eldon, Hawkins and Myers. There was no chair remarks. Oh, I thought we did approve, we didn't approve minutes last time?
We did have a.
We did.
We did.
Yeah, we, we had approved for the, the prior discussion related to the meeting before, which was the approval of the. Didn't we close out the application from the, the address of the Boulevard?
Silver's phone, the, the, there was something in the Boulevard, yeah.
That's my mistake, all. You guys did approve the eight twenty-seven minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Michael, Michael makes very few mistakes, so he's already on top of it.
When I do.
Exactly. You have a good record of it. Alright, so the eight twenty-seven twenty minutes, okay. Sue, register for classes. Now that the issues arising from construction twenty and Rock Street are not in the planning board's purview, that's the extension of a driveway on a property within the historic district. There was some neighbor correspondence that was trying to get the, that seemed to be wanting the applicant, well, no, they clearly said they wanted the application to be referred to the planning board. It's the extension of a driveway, which is, it's, in my opinion, it's not in the code and the village attorney agrees as well. So that's just with the HDRB. So these are the minutes, Holloway Family LLC, forty-nine Main Street, this is all from the, from the referral. So the first floor was last used as retail, but it's to make it for the past year. Central client is a law firm seeking professional office space for one employee and occasional overall spaces, eight hundred usable spaces, four hundred. Sounds about right. It was noted, the floor in question is not on grade, the space is basement, thus the floor under consideration is considered the first floor for the purposing. Yep, that seems right. If Holloway were to rent to another retail client, there would be no change of use and no additional parking waivers. That's, I understand what Michael meant with that, that was part of the discussion, but what the, the important piece here is that it likely wouldn't get referred to us. I'm not, I'm not in, the way I read the code is that really, I think every change of use should be referred to the planning board to update the site plan because the parking waivers are only good for one use. So I prefer to change this to something along the lines of, there would likely be no referral for change of use from the code enforcement officer. Or there might not be a referral because it isn't, it isn't that, it, look, if it were to be referred to the planning board, we would, there wouldn't be a change of use, but we'd have to update the site plan and then you'd have to buy new parking waivers because the parking waivers are very clear that they're for a one-time use. Is that how everybody remembers the discussion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll modify that, just to say that. Application required three parking spaces, less one grandfathered space for a total of two, that's correct. May, public hearing one fourteen, which obviously is today, it's not happening. May motion, they had the workshop for eight depot square to the agenda, Sue Myers seconded the motion. During discussions noted that because we're just to create a takeout restaurant and several addition, additional apartments. Parking waivers are issued for the B1, but it's determined that the property is in the R1 for, thanks to Stephanie for which waivers aren't available. A commercial use in the R1 district would require a variance for the CPA. That all looks good.
Yep.
There was no public comment, we had no additional board, and then we adjourned at eight thirty-eight. Motion to approve the twelve ten minutes as amended.
So moved.
A second. Michael, you can pick, it's either Lara or us. Alright, very good. So we will dispense with that. This is very weird. What screen am I seeing? Let's see, where are we?
Yeah, you seem to be sharing your desktop here.
No, the funny thing is it's not mine, it must be Michael's.
Oh, Michael, you're sharing your. Got it.
So it must be when I pop in. Alright, so these are the.
My desktop, I'm not sharing anything.
Isn't that funny? Wow.
However, Sue is sharing her.
Oh, that may be, okay, well, I will, okay.
So, so stop sharing, Sue.
Okay, sorry. I don't know why, hold on, hold on, let me see, I am.
We'll send the geek squad over.
Stop share, okay, there we go, I'll bet.
Okay, so actually.
Alright, now I see the other things, okay.
Very good. Alright, actually, let me pop up the application. One second here.
Are you still there?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll move on to new business. Tonight we have Wells Fargo. Who do, I assume we have Alex Andrup for Wells Fargo?
Yes, sir, I'm representing Wells Fargo, we're the lighting designer.
Okay, very good. So was everybody on the board able to get the plans and to take a look at them? So it's obviously a photometric plan and you know, kind of a, what they're, what they're up to on the site. The application, it went before the HDRB, I think they had at least, I think it might have just been one workshop. And the HDRB has asked the planning board to take a look at it for a site plan update. You know, to review and amend the site plan, which is reasonable. It's a one new pole added, six new lights. And so obviously, because it abuts across the street, Marion Avenue, the residential use in the back, as well as obviously the apartments over, you know, Drug World and all that. Lights Village is obviously of concern and obviously so we'll, we'll update the site plan with them tonight. It, obviously, everybody knows it's in Futon Plaza on the rightmost, you know, the, the northern end of the, of the strip there. It goes obviously front to back, so there's lighting that is proposed in the front as well as the rear. Which abuts the Marion Avenue homes in the back. So let me just share out the plans. I mean, obviously, the, the scope of work is pretty straightforward, so let's just take a look at the plans. So, I mean, they're pretty dense. I'm not sure how well this is gonna, kinda probably just kind of focus in on the areas, not the notes. So.
Is this, is this rising, I guess, is the height of this, it's rising above rising above the building height?
These are all installed in the sofa.
Right.
Alex, are there, are you showing us lights here on the adjacent property that are also being installed?
Those are already there, those are out of scope, and I actually have something that might be easier to look at if you want me to share my screen.
Sure, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Can you see my screen?
Yep.
So this is without the photometrics on there, just so it's a cleaner view. And then I also kind of created a markup as well, pointing to actual photos of the site where the fixtures are going, in case you wanted a better view of where they're actually going to be installed on the building. So, I'm asking if fixtures were above the building. In our original design, we did have wall fixtures above the building because the landlord would not approve any new poles being added to the site. After the ARB board, we were able to get with the landlord and they approved new poles, so we're able to take off any fixtures above the building. The fixtures you're seeing right here are recessed lights underneath the canopy.
And that's in the sofa of the, of the canopy, right?
Correct, correct. But if you see these CSN1 and these SM1, those aren't above the building, those are just on the building columns.
And those are lighting signage, or?
They are lighting for the compliance area we needed for the ATM. And I can show you, it might be easier if you want me to just go through the markup, kind of showing you where they're getting installed if you want.
Yeah, whatever, yeah, you know, look, you know the plan, so to certainly walk us through it, whatever you think is.
Yeah, so this is just kind of showing what we're doing and then kind of, if you have any questions afterwards, we can talk about it, but we're going to be installing, and all these fixtures that we're adding are LED full cutoff fixture, dark side compliant. So there's not going to be any uploading or anything like that. So we're installing two new wall fixtures at the very top of the building right here, not above it, but it's in line with the current white fixtures on the signage.
So in the face of the.
Correct, correct.
Can I, can I just ask how, you've shown, so that, that device there in the upper left, it's a flat device. I imagine that the flat part is going against the flat wall that it's attached.
It's hard to tell, it's almost, so if you were staring at this, you would see this front part and underneath it is the light source, and then this back part is where it gets installed to the wall.
Understood. Okay, now I understand, thank you. Okay, and it's casting down from it.
Correct, correct.
Thank you. Thanks for confirming, very good. Yeah.
And then this is just showing new pole location.
Okay, and how high is that pole?
It's going to be mounted, it's going to be a twenty, the fixture's going to get twenty foot above the finished grade, so twenty feet.
Okay, and so that looks like a really bright light.
Yes, and I can show you after this, the photometrics, just so you can kind of see how bright the area is.
Okay. Oh, dear.
You're adding a wall light right here. It's gonna, it's actually, I don't, I'm sorry, there's not a photo here, but it's the same fixture as this first photo. This is just showing that, oh, go ahead.
And what are the additional, on the photometrics, and maybe you could help us understand them. Do, do we have a, do, do you have a table that shows just the change in the lumens that or foot candles, or whatever you.
The rea, I'll just, the reason we're adding lighting is because Wells Fargo is doing exterior ATM upgrade where they're trying to bring all of their exterior ATMs into code. So the New York law requires a certain amount of foot candles at different radiuses and distances from that ATM for safety at nighttime. So everything we're adding is to meet compliance with that. While at the same time retrofitting any non-LED fixtures on site.
And I assume this is twenty-four seven lighting?
It is hours of darkness.
Yeah, hours of darkness, right, right.
So, the rea, and this is just, this is kind of, we can talk about this later, but we're adding areas for all these radiuses basically from the ATM lobby.
And is that, so where you, where you draw the perimeter of that, is that the extent of the light spillage, or that's just what you, that's just what you're showing? The area where you comply with, with the, with the code for?
Correct. On this page, it's just showing the light in that code area, but on this page, we have the full site photometric showing the light spillage and everything.
And you start to get to, towards zero when you're at, is that the sidewalk to the far left on Chestnut Street? Is that where the zeros are? Or is it off the property?
I think it's right, I think the sidewalk is right here.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, it gets very close to zero. It's not going to be zero because there's already existing light here. Everything orange is on site already.
Right, and that's all, what is that, sodium vapor stuff? It's very orange over there, isn't it?
Yeah, it might be. A lot of it is usually the sodium lights if they haven't been upgraded. Okay, so I can, if you, you want me to keep going through the markup or?
Yeah, what, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, please, yeah, whatever. Actually, let's do that, we'll hold our questions so you can kind of walk through.
I mean, anyway, you guys want to do it, but.
That's fine.
So this is just showing that all these fixtures underneath the canopy, we're just replacing them one for one with LED recess canopy lights. Just more canopy lights we're replacing.
And I assume the other tenants are in line with this, because obviously you've got your code because of a, you know, a blast zone, let's not call it a blast zone, but you, you've got to light up a certain area in a certain, you know, radius around an ATM. So the other, I assume the landlord is.
Yes, we have landlord approval from this side already.
Okay.
Is that something that's included? That, is that documented in, in the application? I didn't.
I think it is. His name is Alex, and I don't want to butcher his last name, but.
Sarukas?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
This is just a light that's already existing, we're upgrading it to an LED fixture.
Okay, so you, can I, can we, can we talk about these and these, this one, and then there's also, I think, two on the side facing what we know is Louis', like around the corner, and that, yeah, wait, where your little hand.
Parking strips kind of area.
Yeah, that, that area. Right now, those are on the wall and they, they light up the entire neighborhood. And I'm, I'm glad that there's this opportunity to alter these. Will this new approach, this, this little hooded item be not be sort of lighting?
It's going to be, the glare from the light is going to be a lot less. Because just looking at this fixture, I'll try to zoom in on it, it.
Thing is light, that whole thing is like.
You're looking at light right there.
Yeah.
Where these fixtures is, you know, you're going to see the light coming down, but it's not at your face. It's going down and spreading out.
Okay, okay.
So, so at most you could, well, and not, luckily not, on blacktop, you could get potentially more reflected light. That's the, that's the thing about, about cutoffs, right?
Right.
Is that what they don't allow for is then you, to do the cutoff, you have to provide more lumens, but the lumens can get reflected back up anyway. But I wouldn't imagine that's too much the case on a, you know, on a blacktop surface everywhere.
Now here.
Anybody familiar, Lara?
Um, no, I'm not.
Commercial stuff, right?
Yeah, less so. But that makes, what you said sort of makes sense to me, that it's not as big an issue, but.
It's hard to.
On this one, if it is at that height, right? Where the photographer is standing, right, where, where we're standing in this picture. That full cutoff is still going to be clearly and directly visible to us, the light, the light will be.
You'll be able to see the light, but I don't think it's going to get past this green area right here. Let me pull the photometrics just to kind of see.
Saying this because we're very much under that, that's pretty high up, right?
Right. And what we're showing is.
It's that little green block right there.
It, it's not going to be too bad because the way that the light is going to shine, it's going to shine straight down and almost this concrete wall thing is going to be blocking out any spillage out here.
Yeah, so it actually should, it should, it should greatly improve the spillage.
Right. And if anything, this fixture is just an LED upgrade. I would have to double check, but if we had to remove it instead of adding anything, we could do that, but adding this LED fixture should
Okay.
reduce the spillage and just make it.
Is it an option to remove the light, a light fixture from that, that, that part, that side, that location? Because it would be a massive quality of life improvement for the residents on Marion Avenue.
So what we're doing over here, unfortunately, this is considered parking and there's code for two minimum foot candles in parking spaces.
Okay.
What we are doing is, we are removing the two existing lights that are there and going back with this full cutoff fixture. So that should improve that area as well.
So the ones that are in the, above the parking those are currently the same big battery sized thing that is hanging on the wall now, right? Where the arrow is, your red arrow, that.
I can show you, let's see, I should have pictures of it in here.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, they're close.
Yeah, so those are going to be also replaced by those direct down. Will they be at the same location, the same height on the, on the building?
They're just, these are actually getting removed and they're basically getting placed just right, like right above it at the top of the building.
Can they, can they be located at the same height?
We can try and run it. I believe the reason why we did do it is to reach out to the end of this parking spots because the lower you have the light, since this light is shining down instead of out.
Yeah, yeah.
We need the higher height, so.
Understood.
I'm sure we tried, I know, because this is also was something that the other board asked as well because they didn't like these lights and we did everything we could, but that's really all we could do is add the three fixtures at the height and then remove the other two.
Okay, I'm, I'm only asking not because I care what they look like, I'm, I'm just asking about the lights because of the light spillage and the neighborhood, that's all, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. And then this is just showing that we are adding an additional one to this, to get to the parking spots over here, and it's just going to, it's going to be at the same height near the top of this building. This is showing, we're adding two more above them, these are going to be removed, you'll see it on another slide. This is showing these two wall lights right here, we're replacing them with this fixture as well, so that will improve the glare from the front of the building. This is showing that we're removing these two that we discussed. Where, where we are, we are removing this floodlight at the very top of the building.
Yay.
And then this is just showing that anything in orange is out of scope, we're not touching it, we're leaving it as is.
Can I, can I ask, you said that you're adding a third light there in the, in the, above the parking spaces. And, and you can see immediately below that light on the illustration, there's another building, there's the corner of Lu, of Louis', right? And, and so I'm, what I'm thinking about is, I'm thinking about the residents who are down the hill a ways, so they're going to be below. So they're going to, they're going to be to the right and sloping away, they're going to be down by, by the GM, you see the G and the M wherever in the corner of your, of your image. Wait, and.
Oh, down here, okay.
Bottom right, yeah.
So there's some, there's like houses there, there are bedroom windows there, and right now, the, the, the green C, it's very small in my screen.
Sorry, this one that we're talking about on the back of the building.
So, so that one is very much a, a problem. The changing the CSH2 on the, the rightmost CSH2, adding that, right? That's a fun, adding that and having that up higher, right? Does, does increase light spillage sort of down the hill, sort of away from the light towards the.
I don't know, does, do the photometrics show that? I thought you were pretty much at zero. He was even saying he needed that height to get to the end of the spot.
Yeah, yeah. You look at the corner there, that's zero something already.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so does zero mean that's like you can't see it?
No more light, yeah.
This is the light level.
Okay.
For this particular one is at grade.
Yeah.
I mean, if you, like anything, if you're below something and something's tall enough, you'll be able to see it, but from that distance, I don't think you would have any issue.
Because, because I, I think that we, I, I understand that, oh yeah, there's, there is, it's not useful light if you're standing right there. But just like I'm standing here, I look up in the sky and I can see a, a bright star shining, I can see that. Or it's not giving me any light to read by, right? But this is a much closer star. See, two, it's a much closer star, right? And it's a much, it's going to be a relatively brighter experience to look over at it. So I might not be able to read by it, but it's still kind of what I'm getting, I'm still concerned about the, the impact of this.
Just judging from here, and you know, this is just Google Maps.
Yep.
So you're concerned about this street.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about those residents there.
I, from my opinion, just adding that kind of cutoff, dark sky compliant fixture, I don't think that would be any issue for even the people driving on the street or the houses.
Okay, okay. Because you see now, the, you can see in this photo that, the, the lights that are there now are, are much buffered by Louis', which is the neighboring building. But if you're adding another one that's closer to Marion, that introduces an exposure, so, okay.
Yeah, we tried to get rid of that light because, like I said, it was an issue with the other board, and there's really nothing we could do. We had to have something towards that end of the building, and that's really, we might be able to, for that particular light, maybe drop it down to the, the ones of the other, I can check that, but we still need something there.
Right, okay, yeah, but I mean, I, I certainly, I, I support the, you know, safety requirements. If, if you're able to take steps to mitigate the light spillage and, and that would be great. If you could, if there are other things you can do there, that's good, I think.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm not trying to say there's nothing we can do, it's just, we've, we've already not received the exact comment, but this fixture was harped upon a lot and we tried everything we could, so I would have to talk to, you know, with my design team, but I'm very confident they tried it at a lower height and it wouldn't work.
Okay.
Just based on the fact that we had to remove these two at the same height instead of just.
Okay. Okay, thank you for considering that.
No, no problem. And then, if, I don't think this fixture is going to be a problem either, almost because this whole barrier is going to be cutting it off. But I think this fixture isn't needed for compliance. I believe it's just for an LED swap out to upgrade it. So if that's an issue, we might be able to just remove and patch this area instead of even just adding a fix or replacing it.
I think that if you can remove that outright, that would be a, a, a meaningful improvement to quality of life on the other side of the road there.
Okay, yeah, we can definitely take a look at it.
What, I don't, I mean, I'm, what do you guys think? Matt, Lara?
It all, it all comes down to foot candles for me. I mean, you know, the fixtures are one thing, but you know, I mean, obviously, two different fixtures produce, can produce very different light levels, right? So the cutoff is great, but cutoff, to get cutoff, you have to increase the, you have to increase the lumens. And then you get reflection back up from those cut, full cutoffs. So full cutoffs aren't, you know, they're not magic. So the question to me is, do we, do you, oh, but you probably don't, do you have the, will you, do you have the photo met, well, you must have the photometrics of the existing as built, right? The existing condition?
We do. To an extent, we have it within the compliance area, so almost if I draw a circle here, almost is, but we are, where we have it almost stops at the end of this building. So over here, you know, we're, we have the light levels here because we're adding this, we know what this is throwing out, right?
Got it.
We don't know what's existing there.
But I guess, but you said earlier that that fixture, which is where the CS at H1, CSM1 there, CSH1. Are you saying that that isn't actually necessary for?
This is because it's one of those, it's not a LED fixture, that's why we're replacing it to make it an LED fixture. Because usually, you know, when you have, like you said, those glaring lights, coming back with it is going to help improve it. Also, it's an energy idea as well.
Is it because there are already those YK1s present? Is it possible just to remove it entirely?
Yes, I don't want to a hundred percent commit on that because I need to just, I don't want to misspeak and say it's not needed, but I do not believe that this, that light is actually needed. It's just there as a replacement. do not believe that this that light is actually needed. It's just there as a replacement to upgrade the LED.
So team, um, do you? How how do you feel about removing that that? The light, the great light that's noted in green, given the fact that there are those two YK lights that are going to remain?
The the YK ones are going to be uh replaced by the new
Another out of scope, another out of the orange is out of scope, right?
Correct.
What is the YK fixture? I'm sorry. Could you show us the photograph of the rear of the building?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm also a little confused. So for the YKs, are those staying or being removed?
Out of scope. We are not touching them.
They're staying.
Correct.
And those are for the doors, the those are over the exit doors. Those YK one.
See if I can get a good picture.
Oh, there, yeah.
There you go. So what are the what? Oh, so the YK ones are goosenecks.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, yep. And I can't tell from this, I actually can probably get a better photo and gooseneck can anywhere be just anywhere from like a LED bulb to a hay light to whatever they want to put in it, basically.
Yeah.
So how come the goosenecks are out of scope, but the other point was not out of scope? That other um point that we're discussing, the
Yes, the
Let me just go back to this.
Pointing to in the arrow or the the E DSH.
So anything that's bank controlled. So the whole one of the ideas is they want to be able to meet compliance with bank controlled lighting. So just in case, you know, shopping center light goes out or something they don't control. They get mugged and now it's their fault somehow because
Right.
They didn't control the light. So these are shopping center owned right here. This one is a Wells Fargo owned light.
The one in the center. Yeah, I'm not, I I, yeah, I don't. I I think if if you if if there's any way you could show us the light levels, you know, because removing it, like you said, if the if the if they have an issue with their lighting, I mean, I guess it doesn't really, I mean, it's a rear door. Obviously, it's just probably more important for owes and closing and opening.
Right.
As well as well as nighttime security.
I think if they change it uh to a downward uh lighting, especially with that uh wall there, um, I I I don't think it's so much of a bother as far as the the downward light is concerned because it's it's a much improvement compared to what they have now on the wall. Uh, and and the lighting there uh is not uh absolutely necessary, but I think it it's important to have lighting there, it especially it's right around the bank corner on as long as it does not bother other people like what it does now. If it's an improvement, I think it's better and uh you know, they're they're I can't say there is absolutely necessary to have that, but I think it it's not bad.
So that's my view. My, the reason I'm asking for this to be removed is because the bank and the engineers for the bank have just said that this light isn't necessary for their bank's
That it may not be.
That it may not.
Yeah, I'm like, I don't want to say a hundred percent, but I'm confident.
Okay, so so in in the event that this is not required for bank's security and
Can remove that, yeah.
Knowing that there are already two light sources in that's on that same wall within feet of it. I believe that this offers the village an opportunity to ask the bank to remove this light and it as part of this project, it can be done. That I believe I I know for a fact that removing the a light from that wall of three lights would be an improvement for our neighbors who live on Marion Avenue. Because I have I
Well, without question, because of the because of the nature of that light, it's a forty five degree angle light, so it's 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 made to throw. It's not a cutoff. It's actually made to do the opposite. It's made to throw the light across the property.
Right.
Yeah, no, I think if you can look at that, I think that's great. I mean, it would be kind of a win to them. I mean, I assume a gooseneck, just because of the nature of the shade, is is essentially a full cutoff, right? It's basically just kind of what bulb you're putting into it.
Yeah, and because it's just a bold fixture, I mean, there are fancy ones with LED that then the the light that they're throwing is very minimal and I would even at night, it's probably not enough light to even see in that area.
Hmm.
Yeah, and I'm I look, I am a little concerned about safety. I mean that, you know, that if there's something bad happening at a bank, I'm not, you know, I'm much more likely to break in the back door, right? So with respect to police and, you know, I I think if the light levels are sufficient for safety, which I think a bank would be pretty sensitive to. We want to make sure we don't miss that either. But to Stephanie's point, you know, the the neighbors would certainly appreciate lower light levels if that's possible. Um, certainly, but to but i- i- in the same thought, if it's a full cutoff fixture, that's not throwing that's not throwing light directly at them. Right? Their their experience would be improved probably anyway. So I think we would look to you to just kind of say what the difference in light levels, if you could look to see if it could be, if it's an option to remove it. Then I think that it's, you know, we could look at it.
Okay.
What do you think, Lara?
Yeah, I agree. I like that strategy.
I mean, because I don't I don't typically want to be in that little corral there if it's not well lit either. You know? Um, I do I doubt that it's that low. I doubt that it's, you know, I mean, you got those two lights there. I don't imagine it's that low. And I imagine you're going to be more sensitive to you know, to light safety than the average tenant.
Well, I guess my question too is like if those if those lights are out of the bank's scope um and something happens to those food town lights or not food town, but the building lights. Um.
Over here.
And then in lights, those YK one lights.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, we're still talking the background.
Those are under the control of the landlord. Those are switched and powered by the landlord. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
But they're not, they're not. Are you taking into account the light that they're throwing?
Not those two, like in this design right here, these are turned off.
Yeah.
Based off of experience, a bold fixture is, unless it's a metal hay light.
Right.
An LED bulb, but incandescent bulb is not going to throw like any light out or just on, it's it's gonna be very dark. And I say very dark because I'm I'm thinking of, you know, I need two foot candles everywhere. It's probably going like point five to one foot candles at the most.
Right. But you what you're saying is is that from a safety concern, it's most probably okay because of all the other ambient light that's being that's coming from this.
Concern, I'm I would want this light here just because it's going to keep this whole area well lit. I I think I personally think it's going to be dark if this light is gone and the only these two are there. Because we don't even know if the bulbs are burnt or what's in there.
Yeah, I'd almost like to look. I think you're improving the neighbors' experience by switching to a full cutoff, right? There's no there, there's no question if you change the CSH one fixture to the, you know, to the uh to the full cutoffs that you're using that the light spillage almost goes away. In fact, it probably should be contained in that enclosure. Um, although you're going to have some reflection back up.
Yeah, and that's
But I mean, if it could be eliminated, then why not maybe just reduce the foot candles, right?
Yeah, and I will look, I'm assuming that this is the lowest level limit package that light can be.
Okay.
So I would, I would, I can double check that, but you know, we don't start with the highest and go lower. We start with the lowest and go higher if needed.
Gotcha. It just seems like, you know, it's hilarious point two, that if the if there an issue with the food town lights, that that area back there is dark, right? Um. And also too, there are lights that can easily be tampered with, right? It's basically just swinging something at the bulb. Right?
Oh, you guys, I'm so disappointed.
Why? Because we're safety.
Well, I just, you know, our our colleague Alex has said that he doesn't think that this is necessary for the safety of the bank.
For for compliant, for the minimum foot candle requirements. It's not in the compliance area, but from a safety standpoint.
Don't put words in Alex's mouth.
It's still
Sorry, Alex.
No, you're fine. You're fine. I mean, I I understand both arguments, right? I'm not trying to, you know, if I lived over there. But just, I'm saying that.
Cross from a bright light. I mean, nobody.
Well, look, without look, yeah, I guess if you could go back and just look at your, look at the calculations in the team and ask them if it could be removed, let's at least start there. And then it what we would expect, you know, it with well, it's two foot candles, right? Inside the enclosure and on the other side of the enclosure, it goes down to zero.
Zero, yeah. So so I personally, I I think uh that's a good improvement when you shine down uh instead of forty five degrees. So the the neighbors would uh directly cross from it would still see a a a light uh block of some sort, but it's going down. You see the light, but you don't see the bulbs shining in your eyes like what they have now. So that is a major improvement. And also, I think um anywhere is extremely dark, e- e- especially behind the wall, it that that doesn't feel very safe, uh at least to me. So uh so you know, if it's a um if you say it's absolutely not needed, then 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 remove it. Um, but you know, at the same time, the gooseneck uh things are still there, the lights uh they're throwing is pretty much, I would say about the same as what uh they are trying to to improve there. So um I I don't, if if you look at the uh the the numbers in the in the corner uh behind that wall, they're two point five. What they have the CH uh um SH one is two point one. So the new um fixture actually has less than the YK one.
Well, this is probably throwing some based on the distribution of this light. This is probably throwing it, you know, a little bit over here. So higher because it's counting both of these lights.
Right, but but I'm I'm what I'm saying is it's not extremely
No.
Right, but
Well, especially, well, especially when you look at like the RI ones that are along the parking spaces, when you're to like really below a fixture, you go upwards of seven, you know, seven foot candles.
Uh huh.
Right? You know? And then to get out to the edge of this of the of the parking space.
Yeah.
Um, so it's 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 like you said, it's a fairly low, it sounds, it looks like it's a fairly low lumen package LED fixture.
So you know, if 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 it's not uh absolutely necessary to be there, then remove it is is fine, but if serves certain purposes and stays there is also fine. That's that's my um opinion. I don't think it's a absolute must to remove.
One thing that I, yeah, one thing that I'm wondering about is, you know, do we have any ability to say? Um, okay, this is an improvement to the existing floodlight that's like glaring, you know, horizontally out towards Marion. Um, and it's, you know, more secure that it's always going to sort of be there and it's better wiring because it's LED or it's more updated wiring. Um, so it's 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 a good improvement. But but those two goosenecks are sort of superfluous. So can we like, can we? Can we get rid of them and just have this one be the replacement light for all three? And then then you then you are creating um a substantial improvement in the number of lighting points because it's like then instead of seeing like three who I, you know, it's hard to know what different people are seeing from their homes on Marion, but I would say seeing one
I'm gonna go
that's 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 cast. What did you say?
I said, I want to go over there right now. I can
I I I think that's a great idea, actually, to remove the if, you know, you could remove the other. I don't know if you can. Obviously, I've talked to landlord, um, but
That's the thing with those two is we would just have to go back and ask the landlord if we can touch them is essentially what we'd have to do.
I I would suggest that. I would say like if you're if you're improving, if you're if you're replacing the one that you're responsible for and you're realizing that it's, you know, it's sort of a gray line, whether it's necessary or not. Um, but it you're bringing it up to current standards. You know, it seems like you would you would be able to maintain safety back there in a much more consistent way by having this improved always, you know, always on, but low ca- um, you know, sort of angled light versus the exist flood and two goosenecks. I don't know.
Yeah, and and the mismatch of the light quality too and the light pattern.
That's
We we can definitely go back and ask if we can remove those two.
Yeah, I would ask that. I would ask that and then I would keep that. And then the other thing that you if again, if if I guess our our requests have been consistent that to make sure that that LED light that you do install there is as low as possible, right? Because the lower it is, the less it casts
Right.
out towards.
Yeah, and reflects up and back. I mean, it shouldn't up and back shouldn't be too bad because that wall's pretty high, but nevertheless, it would, you know, I think you're right. I I think I think that's a good compromise. Do you agree, Stephanie? I mean, because that way then you know, first and also too, I I like, I I assume that these are more tamper proof fixtures, right?
Oh, yeah, the bank has certain fixtures and manufacturers that they're using that's gone through their whole security legal system and all that.
Yeah, I just don't love that you just kind of swing a bat, you know, and bust the two goosenecks and then that whole that enclosure is in the dark and the back door of a bank.
Mm hmm.
Um, I don't, you know, if they were, if they're my employees, I'd be worried if they were whatever, right? You know, and um
Far thriller, yeah.
So I think Lara, I think Lara's got a good solution if that if that's workable is really to put in the modern fixture that's tamper proof. Make it consistent, you know, the first of all, the fixtures will match around. They don't really add anything. These ye olde timey on a, you know, on a cement block structure. You know, when there's just a bunch of other ones being, you know, a bunch of other modern, you were saying the H R B didn't like the fixtures, I assume. Is that what they're?
Well, our original design was a lot different because we had they, we weren't allowed to pull by the landlords, so we had these ugly pole lights on top of like a slit or like a like a three foot rod on top of the building almost, and that they were not okay with.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that sounds like not okay.
Yeah, well, it was honestly, and that was a it was only a solution we brought forward because the landlord would not budge. But once we got, you know, denied, the landlord moved a little bit.
Oh, okay, very good.
That's good. That's good.
Yeah, so check. And then, I mean, even I guess uh obviously, the best thing would be to remove the the rear YK ones, but if you if they could just be de-lampd, you could also just, you know. Um, what does he care? I mean, but obviously, that's not really something we can do in a site plan. Anyway, they really should be gone if they're gone.
Yeah.
Um. I, yeah, so if you can come back to us with that, if it I I assume if you have a little bit of time to do that. And it the only the other, so the light post, I assume there's no what I'm looking, we're looking at the bird's eye view of the fixture heads. We're not looking at the at the base, right? Are you are we are you losing parking?
They are at the back of the parking spot, so you would still be able to park there.
Wow, that's a people like pass through there from
I know, and that that is the reason why the landlord didn't want it at first.
Yeah, yeah.
And this is, there are there are really only two locations you can place them is here. And you can't, you can't do anything in these parking spots because right here, these two are handicapped and you can't put poles near a handicap spot.
Oh, interesting. Didn't know that. Okay.
Yeah, just because if they if you have it too closely, you know, can't open the doors or access the ramp or anything like that.
Right.
The fr- the front, you can't like where the one point plus one point five is?
Right here.
Yeah.
Um, I think there's actually like a sign here or like I think there's a handicap like in ground sign.
There is, yeah, there is signage, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, could the pole be there and then that signage be?
So we had, we had an option where the pole was on this side and the landlord preferred it down here.
Okay.
So it, no, no, you're fine.
Sorry.
There's not a lot of good pole locations just based off the how the parking lot is laid out.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
If there's like, you know, an island for trees right here or something like that, perfect, but
The point, the one point five is there, do you see in that?
Sorry to that again.
That block over to the left, move your hand to the left and then down. Move it down, 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 down. There it is, that block right there. That's where there's a tree and shrubbery and
At this point, this
Too far out of his radius.
And then you can't, you can't shine in front of the the shop front. The the whole purpose is to have more lighting over in their in their area, so they have more light.
Yeah, if if we move the pole over here, we would have to do almost not pole fixtures, but brighter pole fixtures up here, and then you're just going to have a really bright front area, even brighter than it is right now.
Got it.
Out.
So, yeah, so you're really amping up the foot candles. I mean, so these are the existing foot candles, right? They're
This is, you know, This is what if our design was implemented, what the foot candles would be.
Right, but if you go up towards the top of your drawing where there's no where there's no spillage, and that's actually probably the existing condition. You're not even a half a foot candle and we're you're you're going up to
Going to be so
ten and a half under that pole.
Yes, it's not taking any
Ow.
I don't know if there's pole lights over here.
No, there aren't. It's dark.
It's okay.
It's a dark parking lot. Yeah, it's a dark parking lot.
Because it really is. Basically, anything that is left out of scope is almost we're not counting on for these for the light, basically. If this is really photometrics based off what we're adding to the site.
Right, but if you look at the at the walkway at the top of your drawing Right, but if you look at the at the walkway at the top of your drawing, you're, you know, when you get down towards, you know, past the hairdresser, you're at like one foot candle. And as you come towards this, you know, your project space, you're at your ten to eleven.
Underneath the canopy.
That already includes the the hair. The laundry and everybody else, I think. Because the bank doesn't go that much. This whole thing is the already food town end, isn't it?
No, 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 he's there going past because of the radius that they're required for lighting at ATM. They're going on to other tenants' property. I think it goes down to the salon, right?
Yeah, it goes about sixty feet, which I can show a photo probably where this is at.
But that's I'm saying, right where your project area ends, you know, you're dropping down to ha, you know, a fraction of the foot candles and then when you.
No light over here at all. Like if there was a light here or over here, we would have, you know, photometrics over here.
Okay, oh, 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 okay. I'm misreading the drawing then. So that is, that's the perimeter of the building. I thought I thought it was your work area.
Two.
Yeah, the this whole building, if there's lights on it, it's going to be drawn on here. Same with the parking lot. If there's anything in this parking lot, it would be shown.
So back, so down to the end, they're they're in the sevens.
Yeah.
And your your highest light level under the canopy is in the high fourteens, right?
Right.
So it's it's about twice what you'll see. And then you, yeah, and it's about twice because then as you get to the very end of the building, even the spillage area is down to like five point four and three point four outside the canopy, but then in front of your work area, you're up in the tens and elevens. That would drive me crazy visually, but um. I replace every bulb in my bathroom when one goes out because they're they're all different temperatures once they burn.
We can probably, if, we can't lower the ones closer to the ATM. But if we wanted to raise the ones further away.
I don't think raising them is is a, is like, you mean increasing the?
Lumin is right, yes.
Yeah, he's just responding to what I just said, which is that you're going to look across a very, a a single plane and see different light levels, you know, kind of fluctuating.
Can I ask?
You may not perceive it though, because there's so much plate glass down.
Yeah, I don't, I think you would notice the color temperature more than the lumens. The color temperature is all going to be the same. I don't think that.
Can can we talk about that? I know that that, I mean.
These are all four thousand K.
And.
That's not bad.
Is there a way to make them warmer?
So when you go to three thousand K, the lumens on the fixtures are less. Four thousand K is usually what we would call the industry standard just for exterior lighting for the banks. You can go down to three thousand K if that's a request, but then I can't guarantee you that the design is going to be exactly the same because light levels decrease a tiny bit when the uh when the color temperature decreases.
I mean, I think four thousand for commercial, what do you think? I mean, that doesn't sound bad at all to me. You're Larry, you're muted. Larry, Larry is an architect that does a lot of residential construction, so she, uh.
Yeah, no, that sounds, it it is, yeah, I do, I do, I am familiar with the four thousand being. Yeah, more of an exterior. Yeah, coolness, I guess, or warmth. I don't know how perceptible the drop down is going to be in that environment, so I'm not that concerned about it, but.
Well, such as the facades are all different too, and that you have light reflecting it back, but to Alex's point, that that is what you perceive more. And that's actually why I change all my bulbs. I don't want, because it's the color temperature changes.
Yeah.
Even on LEDs as they age, you know, so I think the consistency of the color temperature is probably going to be perceived more, but it's, you know, it's it's a lot of foot candles, but it's um.
Will it take these four thousands to start feeling warmer? I mean.
I think I think they say like ten percent every year after the third year or something. I I don't know exactly what it is. I have to look at the manufacturer's warranty.
Yeah.
One of the reasons why I'm asking is we, you know, o- over the years, there's in, there's been, you know, more development in this area of our community. We've got the supermarket, we've got this Dunkin Dunkin Donuts with a new canopy and the lights under that canopy are just exceptionally bright LEDs, very cold. And but for all I know, they could be four thousand. Down the road, we've got.
No, they're they are not four thousand.
Yeah, so usually when you have like the this kind of area, I I'm not going to say they're they're five thousand K, but like gas stations, parking lots.
Yeah, yeah.
That's usually five, like apartment, parking lots, apartment.
You think those are only five? I would think they're.
It could be more. They, I I would just think five thousand, I mean, five thousand K is the highest I've ever respected. I've never respected anything higher, but it could be higher.
Yeah, so I I and this is just by by way of illustrating that there's a very, there's a a bright, a system of brightness over here. So that's a lot of afterglow. Down the road, just around the corner is the Butterfield property, which is like a sodium shop. It's like it's lit up like the Chrysler Building all night. And so it, that's a lot of ambient light that is is not not necessarily an atmosphere of no light trespass, right?
And I, I think the way that we're doing it and how most of the lighting is coming from the building and the height of the building. I don't think you're going to see a lot of glow, you know, I mean, this is obviously closer to the street.
Yeah.
Everything back here, I don't think you're going to get almost anything near here. I think the only way you're really going to be like, oh, my gosh, it's light is if, you know, you're going to the bank on purpose to go to the bank.
And you'll be like, I'm so glad the lights are on.
Yeah.
And four thousand and four thousand is still considered on the edge of warm. That's not a cool white.
Yeah, like for interior, I, we usually, is it twenty seven hundred? So it's almost three thousand.
Yeah, well, and actually, in the more modern stuff, they don't want twenty seven hundred. They want around thirty two or, you know.
Yeah.
You know, when you're using, you know, like pure whites, they don't, they want the coloring, the color rendering index better. You know, just so it doesn't yellow everything. And like in a bathroom, you know, I think, you know, like re, what's a reveal bulb? I think those are like thirty two hundred, I think.
And then you have like the ninety C R color gradient on everything too.
Yeah, I mean. So I don't, I don't, I think it seems four thousand is would be fine. I mean, in my percent, and and I'm pretty sensitive to color temperature. Okay, so and the foot, so the footprint on the on the light posts, it's, it doesn't, you're still end up with a full parking space? Can you do us a favor? Can you at least show us the base of the on another drawing? Do you have it that shows the base?
I have a pole based engineering detail, I think, but I don't think it's going to show it on the parking space.
Is it just a concrete cylinder?
Yeah, that's what it's going to show. It's like a three foot concrete cylinder if I have it here.
I mean, that, you know, that was one of our first forays into smart parking, which didn't turn out to be so smart. You know, because it's all, it it's all the same hours, so it the shared parking, you know, in a, in a, in a, in a plaza that, you know, it's not like there's a nightclub on one and a grocery store on the other.
Right.
You know, it's like, it's there, you know, everybody's got the same hours there, so it's, there's very, it is, it's a real parking problem. So even to lose a space, I think is concerning there.
Gotcha. I mean, I think the way that we designed it, it's not to lose a space. I mean, that was obviously one of the concerns with the landlord was why I didn't want it there in the first place. So it.
If you could, if you could just do a favor, just to show the drawing, to show the base on the drawing and to show that you still, that you still maintain a minimum parking space. You know, you know what? And it's fine, even if it's, I'm not saying it's fine. I I'm, you know, the vote can decide whether or not, the board can decide whether or not it's fine. I I don't have any issue even saying this is a compact car space. I just want it to be clear that it's still a reasonable car space.
What we do is we can add a site note to our plans, just stating that we're not taking up a parking spot. It's still going to be usable.
Yeah, that's that's really important on this site because, you know, I mean, it's the only grocery store we got and it's not ready parking. Like I said, they did smart parking to reduce the, you know, to do the shared parking and it, it really, it didn't, hasn't gone so well.
They don't have anything to share.
Yeah, no, that's just it, yeah. Unless the. I think that's really, does anybody have any other comments for the, and then I guess we'll put you, should we put you on in two weeks or do you want more time, Alex, or?
No, two weeks is fine. They're earlier, the better. I think we can get this turned around to you in two weeks. How early do you need the plans to be sent to you before?
Look, the earlier the better, but it's it's perfectly fine to have it a day or two in advance, just as long, so we can distribute them. Because we're virtual now, the the, you know, the clerk, you know, puts them up on the electronic folders, which is actually working out quite well. It actually, the presentment of these things actually is, I'm really going to regret.
I think what got submitted are these engineering plans. I know for a fact I can get your design drawings before the two weeks. Engineering plans might be cutting it at the meeting time, maybe a couple of days after, but we're going to still have all the photometrics because we run the photometrics in-house.
No, that's so, and by the engineering plan, you're talking about the parking space?
Uh, sorry, the, like, the the this set of plans here kind of showing the electrical site plan, the cut sheets and like just really this, this is the only thing we won't have is, and this is just showing how we're wiring the lights.
Yeah, and we don't need that level of detail.
Yeah, as long as we have what I've been showing you, we're good.
And again, like I said, I mean, I think the photometrics are good. It's good to see the fixtures. It's good to see what fixtures going where. That's great to have on the site plan. And even if you, and even if it's just a note on the site plan that, you know, that we're this, you know, this A V M one pole is going. It will not include, you know, the park, the use of the parking space.
Right, and I can hundred percent have that note. I can try to get like a rendering or something drawn up. I'm not going to be able to guarantee that we can do that, but a hundred percent a note. And then that's going to get passed to the contractor and it's, it'll be a parking spot.
And there's no, there is no parking on the other side of those, right? People pass through there.
And that's the reason why they didn't want to pull in the first place, I think, is because this almost was, people were just zooming, could just zoom into here, basically.
Yep, they do.
Yeah, it's not a great traffic plan, frankly, but yeah, they do zoom in and out.
Yep.
It's not a great design. I mean, they, but because there's nothing calming it, like you said, well, hence the word zooming.
Now there, now there'll be a pole, a pole there to calm the traffic patterns.
Somebody's absolutely going to hit that pole. And that would be me because I'm like, there's no pole there. I know this place.
We'll leave some yellow signs around it at the beginning.
Definitely, please paint the pole. I actually did hit one, but it was painted brown, the same color as the field it was up against. Yeah, they, and then I saw the next time I went there, they painted it yellow.
Okay.
So there's a reason for that.
Recap, just so, you know, I bring everything you guys discuss next time. We're taking a look at this back area. We can remove these Y K ones. Awesome. And keep this S H one.
Wait, if.
Or is it, or do you, which which option would you prefer? Sorry, I know we talked, would you rather have the Y K ones here and remove the S H one or keep the S H one, remove the Y K ones?
But I I I do like layer, I understand Stephanie's point, and I think it achieves part of what Stephanie's trying to achieve, which is improving the neighbors view, but I'm as concerned about safety and the idea of a tamper proof fixture that then evens out the light and ensures that there's light, and Lara brought up those points as well, it would be my vote.
Now, I would, I, could I contribute here? I just want to say that if you can't remove the Y K ones. I I would, I would appreciate if the, if you could remove the C S H one.
Sure, yeah, and that would, that that's just all going to be based if the landlord says we can touch them, and if we can't touch them, then we'll remove the S H one if it's not needed.
And we can just do an annotation on the on the approved drawing. I don't see that, we don't need a public hearing for this. I don't see why in the world we would want to do a public hearing because we're just going to be hearing about a lot of things that we, you know, that, you know, we have a, we have a pretty clear light code and there's not much there. Right? You know, which basically says, you know, if you're within twenty five feet of a, you know, of a residential use and that no, there isn't anything within twenty five feet. And don't, and don't spill across your property, right? So that that is, it's already complied, so there's no change of use. It's a, you know, it's an updated site plan. I I would vote that we don't need a, we do not need a hearing. Anybody?
It's within twenty five feet of a residential district boundary, and so it, this is on a residential district boundary.
Well, twenty five feet of, yeah, but to the road?
Twenty five feet of a residence district boundary, right? And so.
That it's already existing, you're not adding anything more. It's existing, so whatever. And then the existing, you're only improving it instead of making it worse.
Maddie?
Well, well, you're, you, you would be improving the glare, you may be increasing the light level. You're, they're increasing the light levels. You know what? Could you do us a favor too, and also just send us the code reference that shows that you are required to do this by the state?
Yeah.
Because I think that helps us kind of, you know, stand behind the decision. Look. We, e- even in our comprehensive plan, which I like personally, you know, it says that we like the nighttime character of the village. And you know, we have some people that, you know, that, um you know, on Main Street, some of the shop owners, you know, that feel it looks a little too sleepy and that, you know, and and so it is, it is in our compre- comprehensive plan to maintain the nighttime character. So I I think if you're asking to increase the foot candles significantly, we should at least understand that you're required to do that by the state code. I'm not familiar with that. So if you could send that to us, that would be very helpful as to what's driving this.
Absolutely. Yep, we got that wrapped up.
Great.
Alright.
And then a site note for the pole, just confirming that this is not going to obstruct a parking spot.
Yeah, that you end up with a, what I, what do we have nineteen by eight parking spaces? They're quite large. And again, if it's slightly less, to just, you know, just note it. I mean, our parking spaces are for, you know, for, you know, great grandma's Cadillac. I mean, these aren't really, um you know, so even if you miss a little bit, it's still, it's still a valid parking space in most modern codes. You know?
Perfect, yeah, I mean, I can definitely get this turned around. When is the next board meeting?
Uh, two weeks.
Okay, so the twenty eighth.
Eight.
Yeah. Yeah, and then, and i- if you could send us the code reference and even the, and even the statute, if you have it.
Yes.
As soon as possible, that way we could kind of review it, because we need to rep, look, we're like Stephanie's point, and that's, you know, it's it's really all of our points too, it's just that we've, you know, a lot of this is kind of managing relationships. And but without question, if there is state code that says you have to increase the light levels at an ATM lobby, well, then that's the answer. And the only other answer is, you know, no ATM, right? I mean.
Yeah.
You know, so, and I don't think that's what anybody wants, right? So I think that, you know, there's, we, we, in all things in life, we take the good with the bad. So.
I can send you the code and the statutes tomorrow. It may not be coming from me, it might be coming from Natalie. We will get them to you. That's no problem.
Great. And Stephanie, would you? You had, you had something? I'm sorry, I thought.
No, no, I, I know, I'm sorry, I'm I'm nodding in agreement with you and I'm looking at, I'm just confirming for myself that the discussion that we had reflects the supplementary regulations to the B two shopping district regarding light.
Yeah.
And and I feel like we've, I feel like the this solution, uh, this solution, in addition to the contributions from the planning board, meet, meet those requirements, meet those regulations.
Okay, good, very good. All right, great. And then we'll, so we'll put you on for two weeks from today.
Yes, sir.
Great, excellent.
Thank you so much, Alex.
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you, guys. I'm glad we, we get it moving. So I guess my one question is, after this, is there still another? Is it the historic board that we have to go to, or is it, if it gets approved, it being pulled a permit?
Oh, boy, you're right.
Oh, this.
Because they, because it's in the district, right?
Yeah.
Well, okay, so definitely send us the statute and we will let the statute talk. Because, you know, you're going to have to have fixtures that produce the light levels that you need that also meet the bank's requirement for tamper proof, right?
Correct.
You know, so I know that that thing was kind of loaded with all those goosenecks, right? The even the bent goosenecks in the front and the although I don't know, yours is not. Yours is like a tube fluorescent light.
Yeah, it's like a, a, almost a, like a one by four, almost looking thing, kind of just a little bit above the sign.
Yeah. So, um yeah, I don't know. I mean, come on, it's not a contributing structure. I mean, it's, um that being said, I don't know. I mean, how'd they light that thing? Is that thing not lit?
No, those are lit.
It's it's daytime, so it's probably hard to tell. But I'm assuming this light shines back at the sign and really doesn't do anything.
Oh, 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 I'm seeing, yeah, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. So that's a two, they're all those tube lights. Oh, I didn't know that. Oh, so it's only the food town. Oh, that's right, because Food Town burned down. And so that's, that got a new gooseneck. A new sign with the, with the bent goosenecks in front of it.
The Grand Union's burned down.
Yeah.
It was the grand onion.
Yeah, so you're right. Yeah, so you're right, um, but you don't have to wait for. I mean, they, they referred, they wanted you to refer to us just because of the site plan, right, and to update the site plan, but. I, I think you can certainly in parallel go back to them. I don't think there's real, there's, I don't foresee anything here that we're going to have an issue with.
Okay.
Um. So all the better, you know, if you want to reach out to them and see if you can get onto their next meeting. They meet the day before us. They're on the second and fourth Wednesdays. And we're on the second and fourth.
I just would hate to get in the circle of, you know, we're doing this and then they tell us to do something different and then we try and then.
Oh, right.
You, you guys don't like it and then, I, I, I just feel like when it comes to the historical board and the fixtures that we're having, you know, they're not. Diner fixtures or old fixtures, you know, they're LED fixtures that are throwing out light. It's just.
Yeah, they're not historic.
You can do.
Well, what did they, what was their reaction to that?
So honestly, the fixtures, they did, you know, they were just like, oh, the fixtures are kind of, you know, blocky. The thing that they cared about that we took care of was, I don't know if you can see, but like, but we had fixtures like three feet above in the air.
Yeah.
And that was really the main thing that they cared about. And we were able to remove those because we were able to add that one pole light.
So I mean, I guess, there is that they then, they're okay, you made the choice to satisfy them. And what is under their purview, which is sort of the, the height, you know, they wanted to lower the height. And they, when they, I don't know, Matt, you, you might be able to speak to this better, but once they refer it to us, does that imply that they've approved it? And then just want our.
No, no, I, I had hoped so. That's what I reached out to Al to say, I assume, I don't have any of your notes. I said, what have you, what have you reviewed? And he said, well, really nothing. But that, that actually doesn't sound consistent because Alex, I, I don't have the information that Alex get, that they had talked about the elevation of fixtures they had talked about. You know, that the, that, and obviously that sounds like something they would say, like these blocky fixtures, you know, just these kind of projections. But they're not, you know, they're not an architectural element, you know, and they're not, they're just supposed to kind of fade away.
Yeah, they're discreet. I mean, they're just, they're actually, they are, they are appropriate to the building. I mean, I know we're not the historic board, but they're. For the historic period of this, um, Jed building, so.
Yeah, I mean, my God, I mean, it would look a little silly to try and put something historic on this building. You know, at least in my opinion, but that's, again, that's not our purview, but to Alex's point, you know, you don't want to go back and forth. So, yeah, I mean, if you want, I don't see any reason why we couldn't. Approve this at the next meeting. Does anybody?
I don't see any reason, I mean.
You know, if you, if you want to wait, and again, it doesn't, you, you, you just lose the scheduling time, right? Whereas you could get on their meeting and meet the night before, and then you'd meet with us the next night. But. You know, if, if you want to wait, then obviously it's just the scheduling of them getting on their next meeting.
Actually, can I, can I just ask Maddie, do we need any other than, I know that we have, we have suggested two alternatives. We have, we have, we have said we want one of two alternatives for that corner on facing Marion Avenue. Is there anything else that we need?
I think if it just shows the site plan, the fixture locations, the photometrics.
Okay.
Um, you know, it's really just one of those pages, right? It's the page that shows the light posts and everything. The, you know, the cut sheet, because obviously the, you know, what we want is a site plan, right, to basically show where is everybody going and what is it, and where is it in relation? To the site itself, um. And I think the, the cleaner it is, the better, just because it's easier for people to go back to, if there's any question as to what was approved. Um, and I think with the, with the fixtures on the back, either you could do a couple of versions, if you. If, you know, you're not sure you can remove it or you can remove it, or you're, you're not sure and you want to remove, we could certainly also just do that with notations. We can just draw on the drawing and just say, you know, if you want to just hand draw on the drawing, um, and I can just approve it as annotated. You know, that if the, if the, you know, if the C fixture, you know, replaces the Y K one fixtures. But I, I would imagine probably within a couple of weeks, you, you'll probably be ready just to redraw it. Any, well, I don't know. Is that true? I mean, would you, would you want to come?
Have an answer for this back area, you know, next week, the drop, like actual, you know, getting the plans together and drawing it.
But you gotta talk to, but you gotta talk to the landlord too, right?
Right, that is true. You're right about, yeah.
So like I said, if, if, if the timing doesn't work out and you think you can know the answer on the twenty eighth. You know, I mean, landlord should be able to get back to you in a week or two.
We, we're, we're going to push for the twenty eighth and we'll let you know, because Wells Fargo is pushing New York really hard right now. That's like their main concern, so. We are going to do everything in our power to get it to you beforehand.
Okay, great, great. So send us the statute, um, and we'll take a look at that. And then as this stuff becomes available, it's your, you know, it's your, at the earliest opportunity, send the plans over and we'll take a look at those. And again, if we, if the timing runs out that we just have to hand annotate to approve, that's fine. And again, the note just showing that the parking space is, is intact, even, you know, even with the, you know, the base for the, for the light post.
Absolutely.
And that I guess that it's also safety painted or whatever. I mean, just, you know, I mean.
I, I'll check with the, I mean, we can tell the contractor.
Because I do think people are going to be driving into that, that, the people that, you know, have, you know, have known that lot to be a certain way forever.
We can, I'll add that to the site note, painted, painted yellow.
And COVID brain. So, uh, yeah, that's really all I can think of. Anybody?
I think that's all. That's good.
Alright, I appreciate it, guys.
Great, alright, thanks so much. Have a good night.
Thank you, Alex. Good night.
Okay, so let's see, do we, wait, where am I here? Uh, I don't think we have any public, right? So, uh, there's no public comment.
Yay.
Uh, do we have any board business?
Uh, I, uh, I completed the two, uh, classes and.
Very good. And you sent, you sent that stuff to Greg, to Jeff, I'm brother?
Uh, I was in touch with the, um, uh, secretary who, the organizers and, um, her name is Ursula. She said she sent the original copies to the village, uh, office last, uh, Thursday. Uh, or, or beginning of the, I think it's last Thursday. That's what she said. I asked her. She, she, she answered. She said, yes, we send the certificate, because there are two things I supposed to. Sign up and send to them with codes. So you have to go through the course. Somewhere in the middle, they give you a code and somewhere else they give you another code. So that means you have to go through in order to get those codes. But anyway, so those were sent back to them and then they said, with that, they will send the certificate. I, I haven't seen the certificate, but they said they sent to the village.
Yeah, so just, yeah, just follow the village clerk and he'll get them recorded.
Yeah, so that's, that's my two more training, uh, sessions.
Excellent, excellent. I need to send him one of mine too. Alright, anybody has anything else? Motion, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second. All in favor? I, alright, very good. Thanks, everybody.
Stay healthy.
Alright, have a good night. Yeah, stay well.
Everybody, bye bye.